People may have more questions or comments. We do have a few select board members here if they can shed any more light on what they're hoping to get out of this meeting, I think it might be helpful. Up front? Yeah, but actually, let's let the boards call the order. Thank you. Do you not have a quorum?
I don't have a looking at the.
Paul is virtual.
Oh, it's Paul? Yeah. Okay. All right, great. So then, I'd like to call to order a select board meeting Wednesday, October 23rd at 7:06. We have myself, Stephen Tsai, Marion Neutra in attendance, and Paul Durensis attending virtually. Okay.
Yeah, Paul, could you unmute Paul? Thank you.
Yeah, I think Jeff said he would be late, so I think he'll be coming.
Is the zoning board here?
No.
Okay. Any members, so they don't have a quorum?
I don't see anyone from the zoning board here right now.
Okay, so we don't have to worry about them.
No.
Okay, so if anybody from the select board who is here wants to just comment on what they're hoping to accomplish and why they are seeking public comment now, I think that would be helpful.
Sure. Can I speak from here or should I speak from the lectern?
Where the mics?
Are you like, is the mic here? There's a mic up there. Above that TV. Okay, I don't think I'm on the camera right now, though, for the Zoom people. So maybe I'll just stand at the front of the room.
Yeah, that would work. Yeah.
Yeah, so again, this is not sort of an official select board meeting. It has really been called at the request of Bob Murchison. I think part of what the select board is hoping to get out of this is to get sort of broad public input and comments, your essentially, your opinions about what Mr. Murchison has proposed in the July 15th meeting. I think I would assume that most, if not all, of the people who are here will have either attended or seen that meeting, but, you know, I will hand it over to Bob if he wanted to give a brief summary for anybody that wasn't there. You know, but ideally, we would like to get a lot of public input. Part of the reason I think why we want to do this, there have also been sort of rumors and insinuations that the select board has been meeting behind closed doors with Mr. Murchison and striking deals with him. And again, I think that Mr. Murchison, much to his chagrin, probably can confirm that that has not been happening. And we are, in fact, trying to make all discussions about his proposal open and public. So this is, realistically, this is the first time that anybody has had any meaningful discussion about Bob's proposal since he made it public a few months ago. So again, it's a free-for-all. We're not running the meeting. We just want to have a public space where anybody can say whatever they want about it and ask questions and whatnot.
Okay, Marion.
Yeah, I might add just a bit to that. At the last meeting, our main goal was to let Bob tell us everything he wanted to tell us about those. We had a little public input, but this time, and the select board held back totally. We just listened. This time, the select board may weigh in. And, you know, you can ask us questions, we can ask you questions. It'll be a little more engagement on the part of the select board. But I might ask Bob to start just to summarize where these projects stand now, because I think there might have been some changes since July, and other people won't remember what you said before, so thanks.
And just before you start, just to see if Paul has any comments as the third select board member here, or anything to add to what Stephen and Marion just said, Paul?
I'm open to this idea from Bob and find much of it quite doable. My part has been that I, as a lawyer, I wanted to see things in writing and clarified so that everybody knew what all the parts were and how they all fitted together. So I'm open to this, but I do want to hear how the public reacts to it, particularly the neighbors who might be affected by one of these projects, particularly the proposed apartment building on Coolidge Street. So that's where I'm at.
Thanks, Paul. So let's turn it over to Bob, and Bob.
Can I drag a chair up here?
Certainly, yeah, or use the table, whatever you want to do.
First thing I want to say is that I would consider it a sign of respect if people could call me Bob. I'm your neighbor. I know almost everyone in this room, and many of you I've known for decades. We haven't always agreed on public policy, but we've been respectful and civil, for the most part. And I would consider it a sign of respect if you can call me by my name, the applicant, or speak of me in the third person. I find that disrespectful. Choose to abide by that or not. So I guess I would start tonight. So I can do a couple of things, and I don't know which order I should do them in. Why don't I say what I'd like to accomplish tonight first, and then I'll do what you asked, Marion, which is to give an update on the projects, because I think I agree with you, that would be helpful. But from my perspective, I, there's six projects that are under various forms of permitting. You know, two of the projects, one of the projects was denied, and I abandoned it for, and done some other things. We can talk about that. The second one was denied and is currently in litigation at the Housing Appeals Committee. The apartment building on Washington Street that Paul alluded to is kind of stayed for the moment while we have this discussion. Brush Hill is ongoing, and we met last night. But I guess I want to back up and say that, and I said this before, but I'm going to say it again, because I think it's really important, because I think it gets to why I'm here and why I made the proposal that I did to my community, to my regulators. So I started out trying to accomplish a couple of things. One, I have a strong public policy point of view that is shared by some folks in this community and not shared by others. And that is, I believe that we should make available 10% of our housing stock at 80% of the adjusted median income or better. And the state has a standard that we all know about, and I believe we should not only meet the law, and I think people, most people know what I'm alluding to, which is that if a rental project is built under Chapter 40B, that only 25% of those homes are actually, excuse me, affordable, 75% are market rate. So if we, as a community, choose to have the, what are now the Toll Brothers Project, which was provided a comprehensive, voted a comprehensive permit, because of four years ago now, and is obviously, we all know, awaiting water, the availability of water and sewer. If that comes to fruition, we will meet the legal goal of 10% of subsidized housing inventory, but we won't meet, in my mind, the moral obligation of actually having 10%. If the Toll Brothers Project happens and I don't build any affordable housing in town, we'll end up with less than 5% of actual affordable housing. So I have a public policy view, and I fully recognize that some people share that, some people don't. That's what I would like to accomplish. That's number one. The second, and it's interesting, because I think you'd call that public policy view on providing 10% of real affordable housing in the community. I think you'd call that kind of a ideologically progressive value. My second value, which is really important to me and the reason I'm doing all of this, is that I believe in property rights. And I know there are some people in town who have ideologies that are very conservative, and a conservative ideology says people who own property should be able, within reason, within public health needs, within a lot of other needs, to be able to use their property in productive ways. And so my second kind of public policy point is ideologically, on the other side of my affordable housing, I believe we should have the right to use our land. And I believe there are aspects of the regulatory environment that are, they're takings of the property. I think those public policy decisions have destroyed property values in our town. And I would say that, you know, my ability, and I tell people this, even who live in town, but I tell people who don't live in town, I bought 18 acres of land, 17 miles from the city of Boston for a million dollars. That's insane. That's just, the property values have been destroyed by a regulatory environment that I think is illegal, it's arbitrary, and it's capricious. You know, one way to change it is to vote people out. In this town, that doesn't happen, because tip of the cap to people who don't want to see development, they show up and they vote for the people who are going to regulate in ways that development is extraordinarily difficult. But that has destroyed property values, and it's not legal. It's very problematic from a state law perspective, and that can be addressed, and I intend for that to be adjusted. To a certain extent, 40B is not really a driver of that public policy change, except that it should be eye-opening to people that land is available. You know, there's never been, the building I want to build on Coolidge Street, which is deeply affordable housing, that has never been done in the western suburbs of Boston. It's typically done in Roselandale, and JP, and Chelsea, and places like that. It never gets built in a place like Sherwin. Do you know why? Because the economics don't work. You can't buy the land in any other western suburb and make a low-income housing tax credit project work, but in Sherwin, you can. And so I'm taking advantage of that to accomplish a public policy goal, which is to bring deeply affordable housing to this community. That could never happen if we hadn't destroyed our own property values. And so that's the crux. That's why I started all of this. So now, I went and I talked to people in town, and I said, you know, I want to, before I did any 40B proposals, I went to the Affordable Housing Committee in town, I went to select board members, I went to other thought leaders in the community, and I said, I want to work with you to build real affordable housing. And I got told, ah, we're in safe harbor, we don't need to do that. Well, the town was in safe harbor on the back of something that may happen in the future, who knows? But it wasn't really in safe harbor. And at the time, and at the time I had those conversations, and as of now, our affordable housing in town is at 3%, okay? And the goal, or the standard that's been set by the state is 10%. And I want that to happen. And so I went to people in the community, thought leaders, select board members, housing trust people, and everybody just told me, no, don't want to work with you on that. I wanted this to be a collaborative project, okay? I got told no. So the way I operate is, if I get told no in one place and I want to accomplish something, I go to another route. And so what I did was, I went around and I bought up all this cheap land in town. I bought 18 acres on Washington and Greenwood for a million two. I bought, if you take away the value of the house on 55 Farm Road, I ended up paying less than a million dollars for the 17 acres there. That is all land that should be productive in our community. On Farm Road, I went to build a small number of houses. The final proposal before I went to a 40B was four single-family homes. That got denied. And, you know, yes, there were conversations, I know what you're going to say, but, yes, there were conversations about building 10 or 11 or 12 earlier on. But frankly, I talked to people and I examined the regulatory environment, and I said, that's never going to happen, and I gave up, and I pulled back, and I tried to permit four, okay? That got shut down. I did what the law says I have to do. I waited a year, and I proposed a 32-home 40B, which is now the subject of litigation. Okay? So I bought up all these pieces of land, because A, I believe they're cheap assets. I believe they're unproductive assets and unproductive land. And we're not talking about clear-cutting thousands of acres in forest. We're talking about infill on Greenwood. I want to build four single-family homes on a street with 12 or 14 multimillion-dollar homes. I'm not wrecking anything. This is infill development. It is totally normal in any other community besides this one, and that's wrong. And you say, well, it's our choice? Well, no. It's all of our choice, and I get to pursue the public policy that I want to pursue, as long as I do it legally, and I, as best I can, I do it civilly. But I am going to pursue this. But I tried to work with people. I tried to collaborate at every turn, and at every turn, I just got told no. I can't even get the local boards to give me their understanding of the local regulations so that I can follow them. Three years have gone by on the Section 3, and this, you know, just swirling conversation about what it applies to and what it doesn't. That was three years ago. It's still a swirling conversation. We need to have some professional regulating that goes on. We need to have an environment where someone who owns property can be told what the rules are. We don't have that, and that needs to change. So we have six properties. I tried to talk to people, what can we do? And I got, I got blank stares, and I continue to get blank stares. Well, that's okay. You all have the right to do that. But where did that go? It ended up in six, really five, because there are two 40Bs proposed on one property, depending on whether the water and sewer comes to town, right? So there are five. I don't know what the ZBA is going to do on the ones that have not been adjudicated by the ZBA yet, but I have a pretty good opinion about what they're going to do. And so where that leaves us is litigation after litigation after litigation after litigation, okay? And perhaps as many as five different cases that we have to adjudicate. And I sit there, and I say, that's crazy. Now, by the way, I might have to ask, so I guess all the kids are above average, and all our properties are below average and can't withstand housing development on them. I mean, that doesn't intellectually work for me, and I know it works for some of you. But, so we're sitting in a position where we have the potential for, and, you know, maybe the ZBA will turn around and do something different, but, you know, we'll have to see how it turns out. And so I sat there and I said, well, I can potentially, if I have to, litigate all of these projects, and you guys all know what the statistics are. Certainly, those of you in leadership roles in town, you know the statistics. You know, at Housing Appeals Committee, the developer wins 95% of the time, and everybody talks about stow, stow, stow. Well, let me tell you something. Stow was a complete one-off. It was an absurd proposal on that land. I went and looked it up, because I wanted to understand it. And by the way, it ultimately got developed, even though it became case law for anti-development people to throw around. But it still got developed. It probably cost a fortune for everybody to litigate it on both sides, but it was a win for anti-development people. That doesn't happen. 95% of the time, a guy like me wins, and I'm very confident about this. And I sat there and I looked at it, and I said, well, we can litigate all of these things, and I know what, you know, you guys have different opinions about the outcome. I know what I think the outcome's going to be on all those projects. But it's going to be two, three years in court. It's going to be, you know, God knows how much of our tax dollars, and God knows how much of my money, which you all know I've pledged to give away if and when I make any money on these projects. And if you don't believe me, I've written checks in the last year based on selling 53 Farm Road. I wrote a check. I gave that money away, and I intend to do that on every one of these projects, because this is not about money. This is about the two public policy issues that I described to you. So I got to the point, now going back eight or nine months ago, and I thought to myself, God, this is so brutal. I didn't, I expected to get denied on some of the projects, and I expected some would get approved. Yeah, I'll give you my opinion. I thought that Greenwood was a no-brainer, was going to get approved. The building on Washington would be hard, because it's bigger, but it would get approved. And given the opposition on some of the other projects, I thought they'd be denied. So those were my, but then everything started coming down, denied, 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 denied. And so I thought to myself, God, do I really want to litigate for two or three years and build everything? Or can I come up with an idea that is a compromise? And can I offer something to get us out of this endless cycle of litigation? And by the way, I'm not the first guy, right? I'm here now. I'm the guy that potentially has all of these cases of litigation with my own town, but I'm not the first guy. I mean, talk to the multiple developers that the town drove into bankruptcy on Whitney Farms, what is it called now? I don't even know, it's changed names three times, and they built like, not even half of the project, because the town destroyed that project, and now it's just such a difficult thing for anyone, that is terrible for our town. And then you had the Fields at Sherwin, which got built. The Board of Health was deemed arbitrary and capricious. And, you know, the project happened. The ZBA folded and settled with a developer, and the Board of Health was overturned. That project got developed, and by the way, there's stuff out there that somehow the Fields is, you know, having a problem with nitrates. That is complete science garbage. And anyone that wants to spend 20 minutes with, you know, 10th grade statistics, I can show it to you. It's complete garbage. There is nothing going on there. And it's just, you know, it's scaremongering. That's been going on in this town. So I said, what can I do to compromise that would cause the town to actually, you know, support something? And the most important on the kind of progressive and, you know, affordable housing mission goal that I am carrying was to do a low-income housing tax credit project in town, which is deeply affordable. And it's something I think that we can, we'd be the first in the western suburbs, as I said, to do it. I think we should be proud of that if we can get it done. And so I thought, that is my number-one goal. That's what I want to get done out of all those projects. I want to get that done. And, you know, I proposed that on Washington Street, because I couldn't propose it until the water and sewer got further along on Coolidge Street. So that was my number-one goal, and I thought, well, that now could be cited on water and sewer on the back of the big Toll Brothers projects.
Okay.
And I didn't agree with the legislation to do that, but I was wildly in favor of water and sewer coming to town, and wildly in favor of water and sewer being expanded further into downtown. I mean, if it could go everywhere, that would be great, but that's, I don't think going to happen. But it can get downtown. And so I decided, and again, these are my goals. I get to have my goals, you all get to have your goals, and it's all good. I spend my time focused on my goals. So I want to build that Lytec building. I wanted to build it on Washington, but if we can do it on water and sewer, I thought to myself, there's something the town could support, because I know there are progressive people. Not everyone in town is progressive. I understand that. People have different ideologies on things, and that's great, no problem. But there are people who stand up in these meetings and they say, I'm in favor of affordable housing. Okay, well, here's an opportunity to be in favor of affordable housing and not have it be in conflict with your fear about wells and septic systems, okay? We can do that on Coolidge. And so I thought, okay, I can get the select board to do a collaborative, what's called a LIP, for those of you who don't, it's local initiative project. It's what the Toll Brothers three 40-unit apartment buildings are. The select board voted for that. They supported it. All I'm asking is, one more 40-unit apartment building. And if you support that, I have offered that, with the exception of Brush Hill, and we can talk about Brush Hill separately in a minute, okay? On Greenwood, on Route 16, on Farm Road, I will fall back to single-family homes on compliant lots and complying with all of the Board of Health's extremely rigorous regulations. Not stuff that you make up beyond the regulations, but the existing regulations. I can fall back, reduce the density by two-thirds on all of those projects, and all I want is one more 40-unit apartment building on water and sewer. And you don't have to worry about the wells, you don't have to worry about the septic, okay? I came to the town nine months ago, and I made that proposal. I sat, and you talked about the, sorry, Stephen, you talked about that there was some concern that there were backdoor deals being made. There, believe me, there's no backdoor deals. I sat individually with each of our select board members and had one-on-one conversations, and I did not share the others' views, because I believe the open meeting law matters, and I respect it, and I live by it. But I did have a conversation with each of our select board members, okay? And I'm not going to get into what they said, because those were private conversations. But I learned from it, and I hope they learn from it. That was nine months ago. After three or four months passed, I said, what are we doing here? What are we doing? I have made, and it just goes back to my original experience, you know, of going to people, and nothing ever happens. And so I pushed, and I said, let's have a meeting. I'll get up, I'll tell people what I, why I'm doing what I do, and what my offer of compromise is to the town. And you might think, we don't need a compromise with Bob. And that's fine. You don't. You're right. You don't need the compromise with me. Can I, may I finish? Is that, okay?
Sure.
Okay. And I find it disrespectful to be on the phone. And I, I find it disrespectful to be on the phone while I'm speaking.
I'm taking notes. You want to read my notes? I'm not on the phone. Don't tell me I'm disrespectful. I'm taking notes. Everyone here is on their computers.
Good, thank you. Sorry, I apologize.
Apology accepted.
Good. Uh, uh, so you don't need to compromise with me. But you know what? In my thinking, when someone comes forth, and, and I gave that presentation three months ago in July. And we had a good number of people came out and listened. I thought it was really healthy. It was civil. It was a good conversation. And you know what's happened since? Nothing. Nothing. So the reason this meeting is happening is because I went back to the Select Board and I said, what's going on? You know, I made a good faith effort at compromise and nobody needs to accept it or want to do it. Totally fine. We can just go on the way we're going on. I happen to think it's stupid to go on the way we're going on. It's not healthy for the town. It's not healthy for me. But if we can't compromise with each other, that's where we're going to go. But I thought it was really, really awful that I couldn't get the Select Board to develop an opinion and say no. Absolutely. You're, you were elected by the voters. Uh, not enough people come out to town. Elections unfortunately in our town, um, you know, five, six hundred people vote and there are thirty-five hundred eligible to vote. That's terrible. But you guys get elected, but you need to make decisions. That's what those of us that vote for you, that's why we put you in office. We want you to decide. And I personally think that I would feel more respected if you just said no. Or you just said yes. Or you said, maybe. Maybe with, what about this? What about that? Work with me. But don't just say nothing and do nothing. And so I pushed for this meeting and I understood that what it would be, would be a conversation mostly among the Select Board and the community. But then the Select Board met last week or the week before and they didn't want to have a Select Board meeting. I thought, okay, fine. Don't have a Select Board, whatever. So we're here. So, uh, just a quick update on the projects. Greenwood has, uh, four single-family homes have been permitted by right on, you know, following all of the Board of Health, uh, uh, challenging regulations. Uh, we got through their challenging process, uh, and those four are permitted. One has been sold. Uh, the other, uh, three, uh, are, one of them's for sale. Um, some construction may begin soon. Uh, and believe me, all of the construction will be under following all of the rules of the town, which I do my absolute best. Uh, I don't skirt rules because you folks are watching me at every turn. Um, and you appeal everything at every turn. And, you know, to try to get away with something stupid is easier just than all of this. So Greenwood is, is, uh, kind of done and launched into the world. Washington, uh, I had proposed in my compromise that, uh, there'd be four, uh, single-family homes on the remaining, I believe it's about ten and change acres, uh, on Washington, uh, which is a two-acre zone. So to do four homes, you'd need eight acres. I have ten-plus acres. Uh, I have two, uh, septic systems in, currently in front of the Board of Health. They meet all of the local regulations, uh, the depth of groundwater, the parking. It's, it's, uh, a pretty straightforward review, um, and that's in process on two, okay? Uh, and then if that, uh, comes to be and we're kind of headed toward this compromise, then potentially two more, uh, would be looked at. That's Washington. Um, on Farm Road, as I said earlier, we're in litigation. Um, I have, uh, put forth in front of the Conservation Commission and the Board of Health, uh, two homes, which were the original two homes, which were denied, uh, at the very beginning, before I waited a year and did the, uh, uh, there, uh, and did the, uh, um, sorry, uh, before I did the forty B. Um, oh, and so those two homes are exactly kind of the same homes in the same locations with the same septic systems. We're trying it again. Uh, the Board of Health, uh, after much consternation over, uh, an illicit drain pipe that the town has, uh, that's, uh, water is being pumped from one of the across-the-street neighbors through the town catch basins. And it ends up on my property from time to time. There were four or five hours of conversations at the Board of Health meeting. Uh, to their credit, uh, in my opinion, they found their way to approve the first house. The second one, uh, had, has an NOI from the Concom and is in front of the, uh, uh, the Board of Health at this time. I've had conversations about possibly, uh, doing, uh, other single-family homes. I had the conversations with Marion about trying to understand the open space subdivision law and some of the other regulatory, uh, things that I have to deal with in town. So that's kind of an update on where all of that is. From a litigation perspective, Greenwood has been withdrawn or is in the process of being withdrawn. And, uh, Farm Road is sitting in mediation while this conversation goes on. Um, and I didn't mention Brush Hill. I would be happy to throw Brush Hill for the folks from Brush Hill neighborhood here. I would be happy to include that in the offer. Um, and I would be willing to do, uh, uh, by, by open space subdivision, uh, two, uh, two single-family homes on that five and change acres. Um, it would require that the Board of Health would allow a variance, uh, for the naturally occurring depth of groundwater. We would, of course, meet the Board of Health, depth of groundwater for the system, but not the naturally occurring. And what that means is you can mound a system. If the Board of Health could see their way, uh, to allowing that, I'd build two single-family homes instead of the currently proposed aid. Um, but that's not, uh, um, that hasn't been formally discussed. That's very discussed in formally. Thank you for all the time.
Thanks, Bob. Yeah. Marion, the public, yeah.
Uh, I'm not sure where to be so that I can...
Want to come up here? Yes.
Sure, we could just trade. So, Bob, we've talked about this a lot.
Yeah.
So I'll probably be repeating some things that you've heard from me before. That's okay.
Absolutely.
Uh, everybody else can hear what we, what our conversations have been, which is a good thing.
Sure.
Um, first of all, a lot of us do share your desire to have more affordable housing in town. A lot more affordable housing. As well as diverse housing. Even housing that doesn't make the eighty percent state, uh, rule. We have people who've moved out of town and would like to move back, but there's no place to downsize to. And, uh, I view, for example, the, uh, apartment that has been approved on Coolidge Street, the, it's now the Toll Brothers project, as being part of that bigger picture of getting a diverse range of, of housing. But that said, let's cut to the chase. Your whole plan really, uh, is, is based on your desire to do a deeply affordable apartment on Coolidge Street. And, um, I, I share that, uh, vision. I think it's not a bad idea. If there were water and sewer there, it makes a lot of sense. But water and sewer is not there yet. And, uh, while we've been doing nothing, as you say, actually been, we've been working our butts off for the last seven years, uh, trying to get a affordable housing project that's a significant one on Coolidge Street, going from one developer to another. Finally, we have a developer that may have deep enough pockets to do it. But the infrastructure is extremely expensive. Millions, I don't know how many, as you know. And, uh, we don't have affordable housing there of any kind. And we don't have infrastructure there until we have that, a commitment to build that infrastructure, which we do not have. So while we've been, as you say, doing nothing, we've been working with the developer. We've been working with Natick, working with Framingham, trying to craft intermunicipal agreements that everyone can agree to in order to get that infrastructure, which is the key to a lot of what we really need in town. And I agree with you, you know, someday we'll extend that to town center. Uh, but that's not now. We don't have it yet. We don't have the pipes in the ground and we don't have a commitment yet to even get those pipes in the ground. So we feel that we may be getting close to that, but we don't know. So I think until we've been able to close that deal, we really can't agree to anything. We're not against it, but we can't be for it. Uh, we can't agree to anything that will compromise that negotiation. And, uh, adding another quarter, say if, if your project and the three apartments on Coolidge plus the other elderly housing are all built, your apartment would account for about a quarter of the water usage. Maybe a fifth, twenty percent. Let's be fair. I think that's more like it.
About it.
And, um, you haven't yet, uh, offered to pay for that upfront. And I understand why. You don't have an approved project. You don't want to pay upfront.
Well, I have offered to have those conversations and have been stared at.
Right. Well, we've, we've mediated, at least the, the first of those conversations, and the rest of it we left up to you. Uh, that, that hasn't worked out. But in any case, that's why we're not giving you your full-throated support. And, you know, if we did and it backfired, uh, we would lose the whole opportunity that we've been working on for seven years now. So basically, I just want people to understand that we haven't been sitting on our hands and we're trying to make this work.
Can I ask a question?
Of me, sure.
Yeah. So, um, why wouldn't Toll Brothers want me to build that building? And, and potentially share in the cost of the development of the infrastructure, which I have definitely offered in principle. You know, lots of people in this room have heard that from me, that I am willing to participate. Now, it's not my, I'm not running the show and I have no expertise in that space or anything else. But I certainly have said that I am willing to participate in the development of that infrastructure. Um, but I've heard from you and from others that, well, if Toll Brothers thinks you're going to build that building, and by the way, Toll Brothers knows I'm going to build that building. They, they're smart enough to know that I don't need your support to build that building. The, the state, by the way, is wild as hell. Um, and we'll just go through the, the, you know, more, um, uh, it doesn't have to be combative, even if it's not a LIP. Um, but we'll go through the typical process with the ZBA. The ZBA won't be able to deny presumably on Water and Sewer on that one. And the, the building will get built and Toll Brothers knows that's going to happen. And all I'm asking for is support if the infrastructure gets built and I participate in helping to defray the cost. Um, and I'm only asking for a contingent approval, much the same way the three other forty-unit apartment buildings were given a comprehensive permit on a contingent basis if and when the water and sewer gets built. I'm going to, I'm going to go down the same exact road as those three buildings.
I do understand, but that was quite a long, well, ago, two developers ago. So we have to, you know, we can't answer for Toll Brothers. Let me just say that. So I'll leave it at that.
So I think if the Select Board wants to hear from the public, we should probably start hearing from the public now?
Yeah.
Doug, you had your hand up. Let's...
Several questions. I'll just follow up on you, your question or your comments. Are, are you speaking to the Select Board or yourself or what?
No, uh, I'm speaking for myself. The Select Board has not voted on this for the, largely for the reasons that I've outlined, but they have not voted. And I'm not speaking for the Select Board. But I am speaking for, uh, myself and Stephen, who've been working on this with Toll Brothers, Natick, and Framingham, and especially with Jeremy, um, for some time now.
Okay. I, I inferred from what you said is that there's nothing to do right now, am I right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Not, not...
But that's not the official position of the Select Board?
No, there...
Has the Select Board thought about getting together and coming to a conclusion like that? Because that's one of the conclusions he's asking for. Like, give me an answer.
Yeah, that's right. And we have not because it has to be an open meeting. And we thought this was a good way to do it.
Is this something you're going to do?
That's something that we will do when the time is right. Yeah.
Can I ask Bob some questions?
Yeah. Why don't you ask them through me and then we can pose them to Bob? That way we don't get a lot of back and forth.
Okay. Uh, I'm not sure, how, how do I ask?
Just ask him. Just ask him.
Uh, how long have you lived in town? What have you successfully developed? And if you think the town has publicly policy positions that destroy property rights through illegal, arbitrary, and capricious regulatory decisions, why do you keep buying land and try and develop things here? You want to ask him?
Have you heard those? Okay, go ahead.
So I've lived in town for, uh, twenty-five years. Um, and the second question is, what have I developed in town? I think, uh, most folks, uh, in the room know that I developed Abbey Road, uh, which is a thriving community of, uh, older folks. Uh, and I could not be more proud of the work I did in that development. I think even my many haters in town, uh, would agree that that was a very successful project. Uh, in answer to your question, Doug, about, uh, the economics of all of this, um, you know, when you buy land, it's really cheap. There are ways to make, uh, it economically productive. And I intend to do that.
That's not a question I asked, sorry.
Yeah, I think the question was...
The question is if the, if the, if the public policy environment is, in your words, capricious, illegal, and arbitrary.
In my opinion, yes.
Okay. Yes, that's what you said.
Yep.
Why, and that might actually explain why the land is cheap in your words.
Yes, I completely agree.
So why, why are you trying to, trying to develop land in an environment that you can't develop it?
No, because I can't develop it. And I'm showing you how that's done.
It doesn't look like you've been successful at it to me. Okay, so I'm going to make a comment now that I've asked my question. I didn't hear anything different tonight than I heard in July. And I'll repeat what I said in July, which is, I think you're just threatening the town litigation. And, and I think frankly, my, my descriptor of that is you're a bully. You're bullying the town into doing something that they don't need to do because you're going to sue them and sue the town. It costs us all a lot of time and money. And I think it's ridiculous.
Let, let's not get into back and forth.
No, I don't want to back and forth. I just want to kind of clarify, uh, that I'm not threatening. I am promising...
Of course you are. All right, let's, 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 go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
I, I'm not threatening. I'm promising that I will in fact use the courts as is appropriate to change what I think is illegal public policy. Yes, I'm willing to do that. I am willing to use Chapter forty B in order to accomplish the goals I laid out earlier. And that, in, in the town of Sherbin typically requires litigation also. And I'm willing to do that. Uh, and I think it's, it's, it's my way of creating change. And I stand by it. I don't apologize for that.
Okay. Do we have anybody else with questions in, in the room first? Okay. Comments?
Yeah. Hi, Mary, we're recording on Farm Road. So we've been following Bob's projects for a long time. Um, I just have two clarifications, sort of factual clarifications I want to make and maybe you can help. Um, the promise of four houses on Farm Road and sort of withdrawing the permits on that, I think is a little bit misleading. Uh, we had asked specifically in a Board of Health meeting years ago if you could commit to a certain number of homes and would you commit to a certain number of homes? And you rejected that. Um, so I just, I guess I want to just get that out there. That's my opinion. It's recorded in a Board of Health meeting. You might not agree with it, but that was something that we had asked years ago. Um, the second point is that I think the third and second and third homes that you were referring to on Farm, which are now currently in permitting, um, you withdrew those. It wasn't presented by the Board of Health. I think earlier you said...
It was by a le, by a letter, yes.
Yeah, so you withdrew those.
Uh, when I...
They were not denied.
They weren't denied. They were with...
They were not formally denied.
Yes, okay, thanks.
That's correct.
Yes, not formally.
Sorry. Um, and then the last point I just want to make is that I think, you know, a big challenge that we as a Butters, and I can't speak for other neighborhoods, but we feel that the projects have never been fully disclosed in an honest and... that the projects have never been fully disclosed in an honest and forthright way. And we feel like these phases and these machinations, you know, put us in a defensive posture where we need to pay more attention. And we've never really seen the full picture or the promise of the full picture. And even now, when we're talking about the Farm Road, you know, it's only five, five-bedroom homes. You know, there's a remaining land thing that keeps appearing on these plot plans. What is happening in that remaining land? Or are you able to tell us what's happening in that remaining sort of unknown about all these projects? Cause that's what makes neighbors nervous.
Um, so I, I, I guess what I would say, I, I, I hear you, uh, what you're saying about things changing, cause they have changed. Of course, certainly is totally agree with that. What I would say is that that's what happens when you have a regulatory environment that is terribly confusing. It's inconsistent. It's incredibly difficult to understand. And as, as someone, you know, I, I just wanna be told what the rules are and I will follow them. But the problem is the rules change. They, and, and so the projects change. And, and this is one of the things I've said to all of the neighbors in all of the communities. There is a law of unintended consequences that comes into play a lot. And so, you know, the regulatory environment was incredibly difficult. Yes, formally they didn't deny. But for all practical purposes, in my mind, as the applicant, it was never gonna happen. Why should I invest more money to, to reach the point that you desire, which is that I get formally denied? It, it wasn't worth the money to me. So the unintended consequence was that when that happened, I said, well, if I can't do by right homes, then maybe I can do affordable housing. And I came forward with that. As I've said many, many times in public, I never intended a 40B on Farm Road. I fully intended a, a 40B on Washington Street from the get-go. I'll cop to that. But never on Farm Road. The reason the Farm Road project changed is because the regulatory environment was unknowable and I got there and in my opinion, I got denied. You know, you, you're right, not formally, but in my opinion, I got denied. I moved on and I decided to do something else with the land. And I will promise you that I will continue to do that. I will continue to change the plans because I'm reacting. I, I'm reacting to what's happening to the land or to, to me as the, as applicant or the, the developer. And so, you know, you ask about the extra land, okay? I'll be really forthright with you. Um, if, if I can't develop single-family homes, I'll probably turn to solar. Huh. I mean, I own this land. It's a, it's an investment for me. And by the way, I think affordable housing and solar both meet my kind of what I'll call, you know, public policy goals. Okay? And so, you know, that, I, I can tell you there will be unintended. The more the town will just not deal with the situation, the more you end up in on it. And there's nothing threatening about this. I, I'm not being threatening. I'm just telling you, I'm trying to describe to you how I think and how I operate.
Can I respond?
Mary.
So I, I guess I just wanna really point out how, um, what an impossible situation this is for Butters. You know, for you to, to talk about phases, but never having an end to what the phase is, that's an impossible situation for us. So we're gonna continue to do what we feel is right to stand up for our rights on our land, to protect our wells and our groundwater. And, you know, unfortunately, you know, that is the impasse. And I think that you proposing a settlement where only you have to sort of, um, you know, get what you want and we don't get what we want, which is like a definite plan.
No, Mary, you get a definite plan. You, you guys agree to the settlement? I'll sign a piece of paper that says exactly what the plan will be.
There's no plan.
But what is the plan?
There's no plan.
Is it five homes and that's it and there's no solar? Or is it, I'll get two homes permitted and then I'll try for another two homes and I'll do phases?
And then I'll do a by right to go in back.
Sorry. Hold on. Sorry, Mike. So I, I just, I just wanna say that's what makes it hard for neighbors to feel that we can trust what's in front of us and.
I, I hear you. I, 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 I totally hear you. And I want you to know that tonight and in July, my first.
Go wash your, wash your hands. Go to the bathroom, my friend.
The Zoom is muted.
Just, I'm sorry. And I, I don't know if I'm supposed to talk through Mike.
No, go, go ahead.
But I didn't hear that in what you just said. Okay.
Well, you're hearing it now. If I didn't articulate, I apologize.
Thank you for repeating that. And I, you know, I guess I feel like, you know, the environment doesn't know if it's happening now or next year or like five years. And so the, the carefulness that our boards use in applying their regulations, you know, is, it matters. And the other point I would just say is that there are processes and you mentioned it. We can vote people out of office. We can try to change bylaws. And there is a process to get these regulations, these local bylaws changed if you don't agree with them.
There, there are two ways to do it actually. One is, one is by voting and the other is by litigation. Those are the two ways.
Or influencing people and making friends. I mean, I do think there are other ways to change, you know, people's minds about things, but it can't be adversarial because that creates distance.
Okay. I think, I think, thank you. I think Paul Durencis has his hands up. Can you put Paul on? Paul, are you stretching or you're speaking?
He's trying to unmute.
Uh, I, everything went dark and I was trying, and I wanna listen. And I'm trying to. I, I think I'm back on, cause I heard you.
Yes. Yes, you're back on, Paul. You're fair.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Paul.
That's it. Okay.
Yes. Thank you. Uh, what I want to say is, you know, Bob, to start off, I appreciate you have goals. Right? I appreciate, and I think we all want affordable housing in town, right? But what I heard tonight is Bob's goals.
Yep.
And Bob's goals. And I'm gonna do Bob's goals. I think Mary started to get to this. If you wanna be successful in Sherburne, I think it would be highly advantageous for you to work collaboratively with people. And when I say to you, being and watching what happened on Farm Road, that exchange of information, that collaboration was not there, right? So we appreciate it. And if you work collaboratively with the different neighborhoods, then we can come to some solution. What troubles me a little bit about this is, once again, we're here tonight and I understand uh, you know, Bob is trying to solve his issue and his goals to get what he wants. But what we're saying is that if a developer is threatening to sue the town of Sherburne, that we're gonna come together and we're gonna make changes and we're gonna negotiate. So I thought if we have rules and regulations that all the boards, that people comply with, that we make people comply with those rules and regulations. I also found your comments tonight about the boards and committees insulting. Okay? We have a lot of people around these boards and committees who put in a lot of time and effort. We have some very good people. Uh, suggest you may wanna revisit your approach for those individuals, right? If you're gonna work again collaboratively. So while I, I, I think there is an opportunity for the town to work with developers, I worry about the precedent being set again. All right? Of just going ahead. If someone's threatening to sue us, and guess what? Sometimes you do have to get sued and you have to let the courts work through some things to validate who was right and who was wrong. Clearly, there's some disagreement tonight as to who might be right and who might be wrong. And at the end of the day, if Bob wins in court, have at it, Bob. Okay? Cause you have a legal right as a, a landowner to do these things. So I fully endorse that. But I think the notion and the precedent that we are setting by just saying, oof, we're gonna get sued and we don't wanna spend that money, is a very, very dangerous notion. Right? Cause it's not just about Bob. It's about development in the future in Sherburne. So I think the select board should be very careful how we approach that.
Well said.
But people have been. Okay, we have Rebecca Hineau. That's Rebecca. Rebecca, you want to unmute?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you, should, I'll turn my camera on too. Sorry. Uh, um, I am a, a speaking with my opinion, although I am a member of the Board of Health. And we have been, it's very important for the board to, and we are very cognizant of the fact that we want affordable housing in town. We all share this goal. But especially in affordable housing, we need to make sure the drinking water is potable. And we can't endanger the drinking water for future residents or their Butters. And it's a very challenging situation when you have high groundwater table. So it's a challenge. And the problem with the idea that uh, we can just use chapter 40B is highly flawed reasoning because the state cares that the drinking water is potable. And if we had public water supply, the regulations would be uh, very strictly enforced. Um, and since we don't have a public water supply source, chapter 40B clearly states that it falls to the local regs. So the, so the boards have to follow our regs and we're trying to do our best, but it is, um, you know, it's, it's challenging because we have to think about the long-term consequences of uh, our actions. That's.
Do we have anybody else? Uh, comments? Yes, please.
I'm Angie Johnson at 44-page Farm Road. And I've heard too that you want affordable housing, which I think we all do because I know I have a lot of, um, members of the church I was in that are elderly and they have had to move and would love to come back. But I don't know if these large developments we can support because of the groundwater issue and the sewer. And we, we just weren't set up for that. And you said in places like Jamaica Plains, it would be doable because they're set up for it. They have the infrastructure. We just don't have that infrastructure. We're a small town and it's not fair that people who have invested and bought here and want to have a nice life and drinking water, that they're gonna have to suffer just so that, you know, other people can get kind of their way. If we want to do affordable housing, then perhaps build some smaller units and sell those at a very cut rate with no profit. I'm all for that. I just don't understand why we have to punish one group in order to make all of us live and co- communicate. I think we can do it both ways.
Okay, Fran.
Hi, I'm Brian Moore, 49 Farm Road. Hi, Bob. Hi, Allison. Um, you know, I'm a geologist by training. I studied geology. I chased contamination all over the United States for a living. It's a great job. Unfortunately, it makes me acute aware of how sensitive water supplies are to contamination. Now, tonight, there's three things I just wanna cover. Number one is, yes, the town of Sherburne's bylaws are very, very difficult to understand. The town of Sherburne's bylaws for wetlands and the town of Sherburne bylaws for the Board of Health are super, super complicated. But it's the applicant's responsibility to facilitate and demonstrate that they can facilitate compliance with those laws because those laws were drawn up with the understanding and are more malleable and more relevant than the state Title V laws when it comes to groundwater protection. Title V was written in the Stone Age. These guys are updating their laws, and by these guys, I mean our Boards of Health and our Conservation Commission members are updating their regulations real time to reflect things like PFAS, nitrates, manuvans, lead, things that kill people. I think it's short-sighted to say that they are arbitrary, capricious, onerous or anything, but prolegated standards voted in by this town to protect our water. Period.
Illegal.
That's a, mic drop.
Illegal was the other word.
They're not illegal. Number two. Uh, I did hear some stuff about respect tonight and I think you're right. I think it would be great to have a more cordial conversation between developers and the neighbors. But when a developer's attorney threatens litigation in a public meeting against someone who's speaking in an open meeting, really sets the tone, you know? We don't have an attorney. We have an attorney who we hire to help us with very, yes, excuse me. We don't, we did not come to these meetings originally with an attorney. We acquired attorney at great personal expense because we don't have a lot of money. But when our water supply fails, which it will, if your houses are built according to our experts and common sense and 30 years of practicing geology, my well's gonna fail. It's a question of when, not if. And you're going to be responsible for it because you're developing those houses. And you will be long gone and you won't be responsible to replace my well at that time. So I don't have a real choice but to fight this. And when you characterize me or my wife or our group or us taking actions that we're entitled to under the law as being, you know, bigoted or anti-development or whatever you wanna call it, when you make the board that you're in front of or offer conjecture in a public meeting that they're changing their standards because you switched from a by right development to a 40B is insulting to those board members. It's insulting to our town. It's insulting to my neighbors, to me and everyone else. That is not helping the level of respect that these conversations should have. That is making it worse. And I had another comment about something, but that's, I kind of forgot. So I'm sorry about that.
We can go back to you later, Brian.
That's okay. Thank you.
Can I just correct one? Well, I've never used the word bigoted. I would never refer to a neighborhood bigoted.
Okay.
Anti-development? Yeah, yeah, I've referred to that.
But if we're talking about semantics, you're telling us you're not threatening the town. You're using the word promise. I'm promising to litigate. Oh, whatever. You're threatening the town. Just, everyone knows it.
Let's, 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 let's go in a orderly way here. Does anybody else have any comments? Either on the Zoom or here? There's no more hands up on the Zoom. No more hands up?
I do, but I don't know how to raise my hand on the Zoom.
Can you identify yourself, please?
Oh, yes. Sorry. Leslie Doyle, 6 Apple Street. Um, I, I just wanna say I'm, I'm very grateful to the boards who are considering the long-term implications of these developments. Um, personally, I'm uncompromised. I'm very worried about the protection of water for myself and my neighbors. Um, Mr. Murchison, I, I appreciate you sharing what your goals are, but if your goal is truly affordable housing in the Commonwealth, I guess it really perplexes me. Why you would pursue it in a town that appears to be unable to support it due to lack of public water and sewer? I understand that you're angry about the situation, but you know what the limitations are here. So why buy up land and then get all upset about it? It just, that doesn't seem very neighborly to me.
One thing I would correct, Leslie, uh, my goal is not to increase uh, affordable housing in the Commonwealth. It's to increase affordable housing in the town of Sherburne. Uh, and those are, they're related goals, obviously. But my stated goal is to increase the affordable housing stock in Sherburne. As I said earlier, I would like to see it meet the state standard of 10% and that is my goal. Uh, with regard to tonight's conversation, just to clarify again, Leslie, from what you said, I am willing to take all of my affordable housing goals and put them, with the exception of Brush Hill, as I said, but the other four projects, uh, and put them all on Coolidge Street on water and sewer. So I, I'm, I'm lost about how we don't have the proper resources for that building. We have the proper resources evidently for three 40-unit apartment buildings and 67 townhomes, none of which I particularly oppose, but we have the water and sewer resources to do those, but not my 40 deeply affordable apartments. So I'm sorry, I disagree with you on that. Thank you.
Anybody else? Any comments from Sally Tipton? You can unmute?
Right, yes. So I'm, I'm feeling as if there are threats of litigation and I do understand how the town, um, obviously wants to avoid that, but it does seem at times that, um, that is necessary. It seems if you need to draw a line in the sand or you open yourself up to a continual line of developers who know Sherburne is gonna cave. So, um, I just feel that, um, we need to think carefully about all these compromises.
Okay. Anybody else?
I did have one more question.
Sure, Mary.
Um, Bob, you, you'd said you were frustrated with the um, lack of response from the select board. Have you formally asked them to consider this as a, and have you requested a vote on that?
Repeated.
And would this select board be? And would this select board be willing to vote on that so that he has an answer? It seems like that seems, that seems like something we could, you know, deliver as part of this discussion and conversation. You know, it just seems like maybe the formality of it needs to be a little more visible to the rest of the public. And I also think that, you know, the project on Coolidge and Meadowbrook went through a very public town meeting. And I think that if, you know, you want support from the town, that's the process available to you. To bring a project forward.
So that's, that's a really good point. Well, taken point. So the way that worked in that project. And again, I want to follow the playbook, right? Based on, I think, was the need of the development. I want to follow that exact playbook. What they did was they came to the select board. They talked to the select board. They sold the idea to the select board. The select board wanted it. They decided they were in favor of it, and they took it to town meeting. I'm more than happy to have this. Now, the law, I'm not suggesting that the law carries the day here, but you should know that the select board doesn't need town meeting to approve a lift. The select board has the authority to go forward with a lift. But I am totally fine with the select board, you know, wanting to do this and bringing it to town meeting. I'm good. Let's go.
So I don't know if there was like a reason why. I would love to hear that.
Yeah, I'll respond as best I can. Again, I'm not speaking to the select board, so this is all hypothetical. We, if the water and sewer were in place and we had a commitment to have it in place, we now will have a water and sewer district, we hope. That's another hard thing that we've been working on now for three years. We're close to that. If that were in place, and if we had a water and sewer commission, which we will have once we have the legislation, and if we had a commitment that the pipes are going to go in the ground, then yes. But I think at this point, it's not fair to ask us to make that commitment without us being able, knowing what the effect of that commitment will be on all the other moving parts. That's my understanding. But yeah, I'm not against the idea, but it's a little bit premature. We can't do it now for, for for fear of screwing up the whole process. And that includes the concerns of Natick. We don't yet have an IMA with me. One of their concerns is adding all this housing right on their border and all the traffic on Spine Street, blah, blah, blah. You can imagine. So we support yet another forty unit apartment building when we don't yet have that agreement in place. It's just not a wise thing to do right now. We just don't have the pieces in place yet. When we do have the pieces in place, then, then we're good to talk. Absolutely.
Just a point of information. One of the things I didn't mention, and I apologize in an update, is that I heard from the state, I expect to get a pal on the Coolidge building within the next week or ten days, and I will be submitting for that comprehensive permit probably in the month of November. And we will begin the process of the comprehensive permit review at the CBA. I want people to know kind of an update on where that is. I am going forward. The select board can, I was hoping tonight we could move you toward making a decision. If we can't, that's okay, too. I will be moving forward.
Yeah, I hope you understand why we can't.
I don't, but we can.
We're against the idea, but it's not wise for us to do it right now.
I hear you. I don't understand. Yeah. We respect each other.
In my opinion, I'm not making.
We respect each other.
Okay, Addie May. If you can unmute yourself. I think you're unmuted. Addie May, go ahead. You have your hand up. Did you want to talk or?
I did. I don't know. Can you hear me? I'm.
Now you can.
Okay, great. I wanted to clear up some, just a little bit on how a lift has, or at least how a lift worked, the one that we have in Sherburne, how that happened. We had the project in two thousand sixteen proposed on Coolidge Street. It was eighty eight townhouses along with an additional large apartment building proposed on Coolidge Street with Ben Stevens and Trash Development in two thousand sixteen. The town did have some discussions. We had a proposal for an EA zone for fifty five plus housing on Coolidge. And then we had discussions that, you know, we do need some apartments in town. There is diversity of housing needed. And the discussions were, well, if this developer was interested, we would, they would build the infrastructure and we would work to assist with the intermunicipal agreement. So the lip part of it came about probably two or three years later, when it was then Pulte and based on developers. And before there was any lip approval, there was a lot of discussion on how could we change the apartment project to change the way it looked, change the way it sat on the property, split it up so that it was not as big of a, an impact. How could we ensure that there were amenities that, and walking paths and things that would be supported and make it a nice place for a variety of people to live, young adults coming back to town, older, you know, older adults who want to stay in town near family. So it wasn't, it wasn't just to present a plan to the select board. There were, the planning board was involved, the housing partnership at the time was involved, the select board was obviously involved. And then even at that, lip doesn't mean that it doesn't go through the normal forty B process. The comprehensive permit process was the same, and the same peer reviewer, a peer reviewer was hired. They still had to work through all the steps of traffic discussion and groundwater and storm water. And well, groundwater wasn't so much of an issue because it was based on a premise that there would be water sewer and an understanding that doesn't happen without that. So it, I just want to make sure that there's the, it's, I feel like there's a, what's being presented is it's a, you know, here's my plan and the select board signs off and it's a lip and that it's any different than really, it's at the end of the day, other than signifying that the town is supportive, it still is a forty B project. It still goes through all of the regular channels. That's it.
Thanks, Addie May. Jeff, Jeff Waldron, because we gave the other select board members an opportunity to comment when you weren't here yet. I want to offer the same opportunity to you if you care to say anything.
No, thanks, Mike. Welcome to your moderator gig. I don't, I think they've actually stated the case pretty well. I think Marion did a good job summarizing, so I don't have anything further to add, but thank you.
Okay, very good.
So I guess I, I just want to keep the discussion going forward because, Bob, I know that you are interested in figuring out steps to take, ways to move forward. And I am, although he has left, I am cognizant of Neil's, you know, comments about not wanting to negotiate with you. But I will say that, you know, I also am very much in favor of more affordable housing in town. This all started with me on the Sherburne Housing Partnership. That's how I got involved in town stuff. I am also currently the Chair of the Affordable Housing Trust. So I am in favor, and I do believe that the location on Coolidge with municipal water and sewer is a much more logical location for a light tech project than Washington, of course. You know, in terms of what can we do to make that project go forward, right? It's, as Marion alluded to, there are challenges, right? And there is, I would say, undetermined depressive effects on the viability of the overall Coolidge project with respect to Toll Brothers, with Natick, with Ravingham. And so then the question would be, well, what can you do to help that project move along, right? Now, obviously, we have alluded to the fact that the developer of the large project is looking for you to contribute a pro rata share towards the cost of the infrastructure, sort of based on a percentage of, whether it's bedroom count or units, whatever, relative to the entire project. You have indicated that you have been, are willing to contribute, but we also, I mean, I know from directly speaking with Toll Brothers that they kind of told you what they wanted and you declined. So I guess one thing that I could imagine that you could do to essentially help forward, one, your light tech project on Coolidge, and then, two, help us to secure a commitment from Toll Brothers to perform the work, would be to get an actual commitment from you to contribute your pro rata share as requested by Toll Brothers on that infrastructure.
Can I comment?
Sure.
Just to.
If you, if you want to.
Yeah, no, no, I'd like to. So, so I don't negotiate with myself. Not many people who are good at negotiating, negotiate with themselves. They negotiate with somebody and there's a give and take. And I sat down with Toll Brothers on two occasions. On the first occasion, they, they were very strict and said, well, you need to be willing to write the check and put the money in escrow right now. Well, they weren't doing that, right? But I had to. And that was a nonstarter. That was a completely unreasonable ask on their part. I went back and had a second conversation with them, and I said that I would pay pro rata, but I would work with them about the timing of the commitment, obviously. And unfortunately, I never heard back from them. Subsequent to that, the town passed a town meeting legislation that is now, I think, through the, well, it's through the House, but maybe not through the Senate. And what that says is, I don't have to pay anything to use that infrastructure. That's what the legislation says. That is what the legislation says. I've had attorneys review it. It is clearly what it says. And however, I am willing to participate in the infrastructure, but I need to negotiate with somebody who's talking. Toll Brothers has been unwilling or unable or not interested. I don't know. And so I feel as though I have no standing with Toll Brothers. I have a standing with my town, and I have a standing seeking and will have a project eligibility letter, and I have a law that I need to follow, and I fully intend to follow that. I am willing voluntarily to participate in that infrastructure. But I can't do that without the town kind of creating an environment where that conversation can happen. And frankly, I'm stunned that the town and Toll Brothers don't want to sit down and have that conversation. And the reason I'm stunned about that is that if they're having trouble, my understanding is they're having trouble making the numbers work, that the numbers are brutal right now for the infrastructure. And believe me, I know because I'm out there trying to build this. I know how hard that is right now. But here's a guy who's willing to help with the infrastructure, and you don't want to talk to him? That's, that's weird to me. And, and if you, the town, really want to get this done, and I know you do, Marion, I know you do, and I think others do, and I want it to happen, why wouldn't you bring me in as somebody who could help, even if it's not a full pro rata, you know? Maybe I kick in the money. Here's, here's a concept. I kick in the money to run that pipe down Meadowbrook for all those neighbors who desperately need it. And Toll Brothers told the town to pound sand, that they wouldn't put that pipe in, right? Down Meadowbrook. There's lots of opportunities for me to help you, but not if we're not in conversation. And thus far, I came to you nine months ago, and I don't feel like we're in conversation. And that's what I came here tonight desperately seeking. And, you know, I have experts on my team in all of light tech financing and infrastructure and apartment buildings, which I personally don't have expertise in, but smart people bring in experienced partners, and that's what I'm doing. And they would join us at that meeting, and we, you know, it can't hurt. It can only help the town. But I, I just am getting no uptake. I'm getting deer in the headlights, and I'm, I'm asking for a response. And, and frankly, the thing about my offer to the town is that it allows the town to retain some measure of control. And I hear the people who say, don't negotiate with a terrorist. Bob's a terror. Now, I'm saying a bad word, but, you know, they're saying Bob's not a guy you want to negotiate. Well, that's fine. You can choose to not do that, and we can go down this crazy path that we're on. Or you can say Bob is a guy with integrity. He's a guy who might have different policy views than some of us, but he's a guy with integrity, and we can sit down and we can work this out. If you do this deal, you, you reduce the density by two thirds on all of these projects, and we go to single family homes, huge taxes for the town, big economic benefit, and Bob gets his public policy goal of getting this deeply affordable apartment building in town. And frankly, the whole town should be proud of it, whatever. But, you know, we, we've got to work together because otherwise I will control everything, right? I make all the decisions. Mary doesn't like the decisions I make because, you know, I'm offering for you guys to have a say. It's not without giving me something. It's a negotiation. But I'm offering you the opportunity, and you know, you know what? I'll change the offer right now, live time. Four homes. Four homes and some solar up on the hill, and we're done with the fight. Okay? Assuming that Daryl and her colleagues in the town can see that. But, but how do I?
I have a question. I don't want to go all night, but I do have a question. I'd like to point out that, you know, some of these, some of the, you talk about the density. Some of these projects are density zero because people have been unable to perk the land before. And, and these are not people who are inexperienced fly by night. I mean, these are experienced people who've worked in front of the Board of Health before or in front of the Conservation Commission before, who worked for previous owners trying to perk the very land that is now subject for the farm road homes at least development, and came back, you know, zilch, can't do it, can't perk it. It won't perk. There's nowhere you can be able to build here. And the reason that you talk about, all I want to do is adjust the groundwater, you know, for the Board of Health to do a one eighty on their regulations and their stance for the last, whatever, fifty years and say, yeah, we're just going to let anyone who wants to build a mound and septic, build a mound and septic. I mean, yeah, of course, all of those houses can now be done. But those, all of those controls and all of that perk stuff is why those houses, many of those lots are now zero density. So your starting point is I have a byright ability empirically in a vacuum to develop these byright. And our starting point is, most of these lots are not developable because they're wet, or they're close to bedrock, or they're private wells here, or they're sensitive receptors. So until we're all calibrated to the same starting point, these conversations are never going to be productive. And I think we have to recognize, Bob, like it or not, that what she said earlier is true. There's a reason why these apartment buildings are built in Jamaica Plain, around Jamaica Plain or inside one twenty eight. And it's because they have MWRA water and sewer. And they file a couple permits and, and pay a couple of license fees and they hook up them. And, you know, that's not an option here. And that means that every time someone feels threatened by a development, and yes, threatened by a development, I'll use the term, it's founded because the development has the potential to take away something as near and dear as, oh, gee, I don't know, the ability for me to drink water out of my town. So let's try to get those things calibrated. So let's try to get those things calibrated into the same space.
As much as I would love, I think everybody knows that I love to go down that rabbit hole. I'm not going down that rabbit hole again. I, we were just getting into a more productive part of the conversation where I suggested to Mary that if she could be comfortable with compromise, that I was giving a 20% reduction, some solar up on the hill, four single-family homes. And that will be it on the 14 acres of land. Uh and and I don't need variances, okay? Uh and Marion, I I think we were getting somewhere on an idea that maybe the Select Board should put all of us together with Toll Brothers and to have a conversation about how this might work. That's how good that's how good coming out works.
Very good. As you know, that's exactly what we tried to do eight months ago or whenever.
That was two years ago.
Two years ago? Oh.
Time flies.
Feels like yesterday.
Exactly, it does.
Um, yeah, and uh I'm sorry, you know, we got you together, now you have each other's emails, each other's phones.
I'm not doing it by myself, though, because I have no standing. You are in.
Well, you're the one, you're the one with a.
It makes no business sense for you to send me off to talk to Toll Brothers in a vacuum. That's why it failed last time. What makes sense is for the town, you and Stephen and Jeremy and me and Toll Brothers, we sit in a room and we see if there's any common ground. If there's not, we all go back to where we are. The problem is, is that if you don't try to do this deal, you give up all control. I am offering that I will work with you on each of these projects. If you don't want that, you're unfortunately, you, I don't have any control either, frankly. All of these things, assuming that the ZBA denies them and that's what it looks like they're going to do, but assuming they do, then you know who's in control? The Housing Appeals Committee is in control. It's not me and it's not you. But I like my chances with the Housing Appeals Committee. Um and, you know, you definitely lose control. And I just think it's a, you know, I've spent my life in negotiations and and investment world and all of that. And the way you get to a good deal for everyone is you talk and you and you work with each other, you get all the parties in the room. Uh but again, if you don't wanna do it, and and by the way, one of the kind of um process problems that we have here, okay? So at some point, the building on Washington Street is gonna go back into the permitting process if we can't get a deal and we can't get single families permitted under buy right, right? We're gonna reopen that. The one thing I can promise you is that if I go and spend another 50 or 75,000 dollars on permitting the Washington Street building, that train will have left the station. And that's why I need you to make a decision. Because then what we're gonna end up with is, from a public policy perspective, a really good outcome for me. Because I'm gonna get a 40-unit uh apartment building on Coolidge, deeply affordable developed, and I'll get a 32-unit deeply affordable apartment building developed on um Washington Street. And, you know, I don't think that's the greatest outcome for the town.
Well, each of these, each of these properties has its own constraints. And my view, as you know, has always been, I keep repeating, each of them has to work on its own land. Never mind what's happening on Coolidge Street. That's a separate problem. I understand what you're trying to do here. You're trying to you're trying to uh encourage us to be more.
Control back.
Well, I wouldn't say that because we don't have control over whether the infrastructure is going in on Coolidge Street yet. We do not. So.
But what have you lost if you support that?
Well, let me just finish my thought. The Coolidge Street thing can only happen if there's a commitment to put in water and sewer. And we, I'm I'm totally open to figuring out whether your contribution will encourage, will help Toll Brothers or will not help Toll Brothers or will detract from Toll Brothers. I don't know that. So until we know that, that's a nonstarter for me, for me personally. But for the rest of them, each of them has to work on its own ground. And if Washington Street gives support of 40-unit apartment.
Thirty-two, thirty-two.
Thirty-two, whatever, uh then, you know, we'll go through the process. I'll be surprised if it does, but if it does, it does. It's more affordable housing. That's okay.
It will.
And the same is true of all the other properties. So each of them is its own problem, the way I see it. I think you agree.
I mean, I I don't agree that it's a good outcome if uh if you can't sit down and work on trying to move forward with this offer. That is not a good outcome for the town. You know, I wear two hats here, right? I wear one hat as the developer and I wear one hat as a taxpayer and resident and somebody who I know people don't think I care deeply about the community, but the truth is, I do in my own way.
Yeah, maybe I didn't state it clearly enough. Uh each of the proposals that you've made has to work on the land that it's on.
Absolutely.
And we agree on that.
Yes, we do.
That's what I was referring to.
Yes, we do.
Okay.
I'm gonna let Paul speak. Paul, you've got your hand up?
Yes, I I what I wanted to say was that I wanted to assure all of the residents that I and I think the board of the Select Board will support our rules and regulations. The references to arbitrary and capricious. I believe in the volunteers who have come forward and serve on these boards. Whatever board it is, the Conservation Commission, the Board of Appeals, they're they're good people. They're our neighbors. They're part of the community. I will support spending money defending what they decide to do and defending their rules and regulations. And in part, we support affordable housing. But in supporting affordable housing, that housing needs to be safe. And by safe, it has to it has to protect our groundwater, has to protect our drinking water, has to protect our environment. We we have rules and regulations to do just that. And if if there's gonna be litigation, I'm not afraid of that litigation. We have an obligation to defend our environment. We have an obligation to make sure these projects are safe. And we have an obligation, at the end of the day, to those volunteers who come forward and serve on these boards. So I I I did wanna not lay you that unaddressed in this discussion that this this crazy regulations and they're all gonna uh be arbitrary and capricious. That's up to the boards. And I'm willing to let a a a judge decide that at the end of the day, if that's the way we have to go. But I am open to negotiations, but the the way things are now, the lead on this has always been Marion and 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 Stephen Tsai. And I'm gonna follow their leadership here as they sort this stuff out. We can't, as a as a five-person board, we can't all micromanage each other. So I'm going to essentially follow their lead. And when they report that they can't make a deal at this time because of the lack of infrastructure, that it's it's still being worked on, that's a that's a serious issue here. So when they're ready to go forward, I I encourage discussions. I just encourage respectful discussions. Encourage everybody to work together because we do need affordable housing. But again, it needs to be safe, affordable housing. It needs to meet the the rules and regulations. And it's gotta work for the community. Thank you.
I'd just like to clarify, Paul, my position on the volunteer boards. Uh and I, if I said anything that impugned the uh the people involved, uh that's not what I meant. Uh what I was harshly, and I understand it was harshly criticizing, was what I believe is very, very bad public policy. And I believe there are significant, or I will say multiple examples where our regulations are out of sync with state law. Uh and I'm like Paul, if if it's necessary for a judge uh to determine whether uh my perspective is correct or whether uh the local volunteer boards are correct, then so be it. But I believe, and and here's just one example. Uh recently, the Board of Health put into place a regulation that specifically targets 40B. It's a special regulation on 40Bs. Anybody that knows anything about housing and housing law in the Commonwealth knows you can't target affordable housing. This is a blatantly illegal law. And I would ask the Board of Health to immediately remove that law. There are many others that I think are problematic legally, but that one is beyond the pale. Uh and, you know, I I I'm not trying to impugn people. I'm trying to impugn bad policy. Bad policy that is, yes, arbitrary and capricious. That quote, as most folks know, is the Superior Court. They said that. I'm quoting. And I just, and and I find that not only are the regulations uh onerous, uh but they're enforced in very inconsistent uh ways and are impossible to understand. And when I go to the board and I say, how are you going to interpret this regulation? And they can't answer me for years. I think that's a big problem in our process. And I'm sorry if that hurts feelings. It's not meant to hurt feelings. It's meant to be a severe criticism of what I think is incredibly destructive of our policy.
Okay, anybody else? Brian?
There are processes for changing the regulations and and there are other things you can do in terms of like town meetings and warrant articles that are processes other people have followed who maybe had similar 10,000-foot concerns about these issues and some have succeeded. I don't know the degree to which those have succeeded or not, but I do know that there's a process for doing those and what we're doing tonight is not that process, that this is not the process you follow to change a regulation or to change a policy. The other, uh only other comment I would have would be that if you're going to um talk about changing one of these projects, any one of them, uh whether you call it, you know, multiple homes or whatever, um most developers come forth with a proposal. They have worked out the kinks and they have a, they roll the plans out on the table and, you know, they give everyone, it's like the full month. This is it. And, you know, we have this going on over here and we have this going on over here. And it, that to someone who has served on these volunteer boards would alleviate some of my fears that I understood what was coming as opposed to getting a cutout from a large plan that doesn't show me anything else going on around it and doesn't address the concerns about what's happening. Is this part of the bigger picture or part of a phased project? And so if you wanna, if if you truly want to negotiate these things, I believe as the, sorry, applicant, you are in a position to offer such plans for these individual projects to show what your intention is. You've said, hey, I can do farm road homes by 48A. No, I can do it by 40B. No, now I'm gonna go to court. Now I'm gonna sue. Oh, wait, now I'm gonna go back and do single homes again. Like, to me, it's a waste of time. I would say, put the plans out there and say, this is what I wanna do with all of farm road property. My long-term goal. And hopefully it's reasonable and something we can live with and I will sit in a room and I'll tell you why I think putting six septics along the front of Farm Road in a row is a terrible idea from my perspective. And the Board of Health will be able to look at the compounding effects of the nitrogen. And the wetlands people can look at what that will do to the flooding and all that stuff, as opposed to being given a morsel and being asked to judge the cookie. I think those statements are very fair and very germane.
Boy, I can appreciate your frustration. Absolutely, I can. Um I will explain why it happens that way. It feels even more that way than it is, but I will explain why it has to happen that way. The first reason it has to happen that way, and Mike can weigh in on this, because I think it's his day job, the 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 buy right, single-family stuff that I do in town is done under A and R, okay? You don't come in and permit, or, you know, i- if I wanna build, so let's talk about the four homes on Farm Road. I'm not gonna go and do, spend all of the money to engineer the four homes. I wanna see if I can do two. I've been open with you that there are two more coming, but I'm gonna propose two because I wanna see how it goes.
That's like saying.
Hang on, I I listen to you, Brian. Now listen to me, please. The second, so that's one reason. In an A and R world, in a single-family home on a single-family lot, I am required by law, if I if I have to do a um uh if I have to do an NOI with a Concom, I can't go and say, oh, these four homes, I need an NOI. I go in on the lot that is the lot and I get my NOI. Public hearing, the process and all those. A and Rs, single-family homes on single-family lots, which have a regulatory framework in town, need to be done one by one. That is the law. And I I actually remember talking about this three years ago. And you told me, I remember telling, maybe I'm unhappy, you told me I was being condescending when I explained that to you. But that is the law that I have to follow. The second thing, you talked about, you know, in most towns, a developer shows up and they put the plan down on the table. Well, let me tell you, in most towns, a developer doesn't show up and have the Board of Health say, well, we don't really know what our regulation means. Maybe we'll check with council. Maybe we'll do this. Maybe we'll do that. We'll be back to you in three years. That's not the way a normal town and a normal developer works. So yes, guilty is charged. I constantly am changing things in this town because I am reacting to the environment. And so those are the two reasons why you see it as piecemeal. I see it as the regulatory process that I'm forced into by single-family homes on single-family lots and by the local regulatory.
I'm not sure how helpful this is gonna be at this point. We we've kinda gotten away from public comments about the projects and got into examining motives and needs. So, does anybody else have any comments on the projects that they want the Select Board to hear?
Mike, can I make one last comment just about?
Is it something you want the Select Board to hear that?
Yeah, I would like the Select Board to hear. One, I think we have to think about our community as a whole and I think we have to recognize that Coolidge Street in particular is facing a tremendous amount of change. And I think that um that will affect the whole community. And I get that it's at the intersection of where water and sewer might happen, but I think we should remember that those are our neighbors and our friends and, you know, piling onto Coolidge just because it happens to be at the corner of Sven and. And, you know, piling onto Coolidge just because it happens to be at the corner of Sven and, you know, Coolidge, you know, isn't super helpful for those people. So I just want to say, like, they're part of the stakeholders in this negotiation. And we need to keep in mind that the community has a large seat to it. Yeah.
And I'd like to just finish, Mike, by saying thank you to you, thank you to Jeremy and to the Select Board. I really appreciate, you know, as Doug said, these are Bob's goals. Well, yeah, they are, but obviously they've become a big issue in town. And I'm appreciative of walking out tonight to listen and to participate because that's what good government is. Thank you.
Yeah, I hope at least this starts an open conversation that doesn't necessarily have to be in a room with 80 people. So you have something to contribute this way?
Yes, Daryl.
So I just wanted to say, but it's late and it's complicated and like the polls and some details, but there are some comments that have been made about the process we put forward. To explain, for example, questions about how regulations apply. That is largely their state regulations that we have never had to apply to projects because these projects have different dimensions than others. And so there are parts of the regulations that we. What we've done, we've gone through the process for all sorts of home expansions, upgrades, moving houses.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? No? I'll call it. All right.
I need to adjourn the Select Board.
Yeah.
All right. So can I get a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Since we have a mixture, I'll do a roll call.
Yeah, go quick though.
So Jeff?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Marian?
Hi.
And I'm also I.
Great, thank you. Thanks, thanks, everybody. Thanks, Bob.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Mike, for running the show.
All right.